And welcome to tonight's meeting. Sorry for the delay. But I've had some issues with my computer. It would not let me get into my go-to meeting. So, uh, would everybody, uh, please, uh, help recite the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Audrey might have trouble, but we need to see if she's getting on. She's calling in for column roll. So, go ahead. Okay, could we have a, could we have a roll call?
The bottom?
Here. Here.
There you go?
Here.
Okay?
Here.
You?
Here.
Are you in there?
Ready.
You go.
Here. Uh, you know, typically with my computer, if someone wants to speak up during the petitions or communications, oral or written, I can usually tell if somebody wants in. I can't really tell because I'm using a different computer tonight, so uh, sorry about that if I cannot, uh... Maybe if one of you guys can tell me if someone is asking to speak, then we'll let them. So, Karen, why don't you take care of that in case it does crop, crop up, okay? All right. All right, item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Could I have a motion?
Call vote.
Second.
Second. Second.
Call vote? Call vote, please.
Please, when you have a question, follow my account or hash five.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
There you go?
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
There you go?
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. Policy items, uh, Mike, do we have anybody, uh, anything that you want to have, uh, to speak about from the policy or staff reports? Mike?
Sorry, I had some technical, technical difficulties here with us. I know that, uh, Cheryl should be on for the second quarter financials.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to say something prior to that. I just wondered, I looked at all the financials of... And it looks like I really want to congratulate staff for all of the work that they're doing to, uh, keep our expenses down. So, it's, it's good to see that, uh, they're, they're doing a good job of that. So, thank you, uh, staff for, for that. Uh, Cheryl, uh, three A, second quarter 2020 financial report. Uh, do you want to go ahead and take over, please?
First off, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Audrey's gonna allow me to share my screen. You should have received the financials in your drive. So, either you can follow along on the screen or your drive. Not sure if you printed them out. Alrighty, um, just to make sure my screen is really small, on the top left-hand corner doesn't say as of June 30th, 2020?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, so, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and those others present. Tonight we'll be presenting the second quarter 2020 financials. Um, we're gonna start our, start off typically with general fund revenues. Um, as discussed previously, general fund sales tax did not suffer surprisingly due to COVID. As a matter of fact, we experienced a surplus of 214,000 more than we budgeted. If we compare to June 2019, we actually collected nearly 410,000 more since last June. Uh, property taxes are also over-collected by $689,000, but if you recall, that's a seasonal revenue. We received those in February and April. So, that amount will start to paper off throughout the rest of the year. Marijuana collections again are also over-collected by 857,000. Of that amount, 606,000 should be designated for the rainy day fund, but due to COVID, council, um, voted to redirect $500,000 of that for, uh, COVID relief for businesses and residents. Um, if we compare to 2019, marijuana sales through June of 2020, and that's with 25 shops dispensing. In June 2019, there were 24 shops, and sales netted $25,893,000. As far as decline in revenues, mostly relative to COVID, we did suffer a few areas. Um, one of them being the intergovernmental revenue. Intergovernmental, governmental revenue includes severance tax. We collected $14,000 less than what we budgeted. In highway user tax fund, we collected 17,000 less than budgeted, but in comparison to June of last year, we only collected 10,000 less. So, it's not as significant as it feels. We will see how that continues through the rest of the quarters. There's also some timing issues for intergovernmental revenue. For example, we budgeted $100,000 for the GoCo grant for the Fisher's Peak study, and then $30,000 for Housing Authority. Um, neither of those revenues have come forward. We will begin to collect some of those towards the end of the year. The most significant decrease in revenue would be in charges for services. Uh, the significant decline, the $146,000 less than the budget mark seasonally being would be Trinidad State Junior College and Trinidad School District. We had a loss of $45,000 in revenue. Uh, that was for the security services provided by the PD. However, you would see the decrease on the expense side in the police department budget because they are not providing that service. Swimming pool revenue is budgeted at 35,000. This time, or in June of 2019, we had collected $18,000. However, in June of 2020, we collected zero dollars. And finally, delinquent assessment. This is the $10 we charge per letter that we sent to delinquent accounts. Um, it's an administrative fee, and it's the big bright pink letter we send out, uh, letting staff or people know that they will be disconnected within 15 days. Due to COVID, we had to forgive those letter charges, and through this time, we've forgiven $23,000. Overall, though, the picture of revenue looks like it exceeded the budget by 11% or $1.4 million. Again, that's gonna be due to property tax, marijuana sales tax, and then general sales tax. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
On, on the revenue side or on the expenditures side?
Revenue. Okay, don't. Alrighty, we're gonna move on to the general fund expenditures. Through June, departments should be up 50% or less in expenditures. Or if you look at the far right column, you'll see that mostly every department is under the mark of 50%. And everybody did do a good job of curbing their costs. Um, there were a few that were in the red. Development Services was over-expended because we're working with uh, Chapter 14 of the UNI code, so there's been some extra expense there. And miscellaneous is also over-expended. Um, we've had a couple of workers' comp claims. We're $10,000 over expended there, and then we also paid... We have a timing issue with miscellaneous expense, including the audit and our COG dues. Those are paid early in the year. So, they're paid in full early in the year, so that kind of wipes out the line item. We're also over-expended in agency support, another timing issue. All of those amounts sent off to other agencies are sent out at the beginning of the year. And then finally, in fleet, we have an over expenditure. Uh, this is due to the fact that the police department ordered four vehicles, actually, two vehicles in 2018, and two, two vehicles in 2019. However, they were received in January of 2020. So, those were cost, uh, expenses that didn't begin in the budget in time because we were certain they'd come in in December. So, it's kind of eaten away at the fleet budget. Overall, expenses came in under by $1 million or 8%. Are there any questions regarding general fund expenditures?
I have none. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, Cheryl.
Yes.
It, it's just a, a knowledge question. So, let's take that line item for fleet at where we're in the hole by 53, 502. So, we budgeted for in 2019, we didn't expend it. So, what happens to that money? Shouldn't it be awash in 2020? What happens to the money that we budget for that and if it's not expended?
Well, if we would have known in time, we would have increased the fleet budget by that particular amount. But we didn't find out until too late. So, now what we will do is, um, technically, in the budget, there's $500,000 to spend on fleet, and we would over-expend it by those two amounts. And it can be amended at year-end to adjust the original budgeted amount.
And did we?
No, we'll, at the end of 2020, we would amend the budget.
Okay. But you can't, you can't interchange these expenses then. If it's designated for fleet, it's got to stay there. You can't change.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, seasonally. And that, that's correct.
Okay. Just a clarification on my part. Thank you.
Hey Cheryl, this is Phil. Uh, just a question, and Karen brings up a good question. Something like that, because she asked if the, you know, we would revisit that particular budget line item at a particular time or another line, or would it be a wise idea to maybe like, at the end of March, look at the budget to see if anything like this comes up, or would that still be too early?
Well, it's, it's too early. One thing being, again, we department could order more vehicles and use up the entire 500,000. Again, the vehicles might not come in, so we would have that as extras to cover what would should be, what should have been expended in 18 and 19. So, we really don't look at those types of issues until the end of the year. The only time we would consider amending sooner than that is if we get a large grant, say a $500,000 grant. Um, then, and actually, we still wouldn't amend till the end of the year because it's difficult to amend the budget. It's the ordinance and a first reading and a second reading, and so we kind of just leave them out, up all towards the end.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Are there any other questions regarding general funds? Okay, so we're gonna move on to power and light. As you can see, operating revenue is under-collected by $305,000. This time last year, it was under-collected by $131,000. Again, this has to do with, well, we believe it has to do with COVID. We have several businesses that were closed, including restaurants and commercial-type businesses. And then we've been forgiven penalties, um, a, as well due to COVID. And finally, just a reminder, power and light is seasonal. We typically see the increase in March, uh, I'm sorry, in the third quarter of 2000, uh, third quarter of the year. So, we're gonna probably see how this pans out in the third quarter to see if we really did, uh, if we really will realize a significant loss. Regarding expenditures, we are under-expended by $200,000. And overall, revenues exceed, I'm sorry, expenses exceed revenue by $141,000 for the year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to water.
I have a quick question. I hope it's quick. Of that, uh, I'm sorry, did you? Can you go back? Of the 300,000 for, thank you so much. Of that 300,000, is, is there any way to tell how much is that, um, is shortfall due to, uh, lack of, uh, sale electricity versus, um, uncollected, or, or is that a hard number to come up with? Just curious.
That is actually... So, go ahead, Cheryl. I'll jump in here. Uh, it is due to, uh, lower sales. I'm trying to pull a factor myself, but, uh, we have experienced lower sales in, uh, in all utilities, but, uh,
Right.
power and light is down.
I, I suspect that was the case. I was just curious. I mean, when you look at the 2019 actual versus the 20, uh, versus the year-to-date actual, I mean, it's just, it's a pretty big gap, so I was suspecting that was the case. So, I think, I mean, Mike, that's probably gonna be a hard number to make up, would it not be?
Uh, that is correct. I mean, time has gone high, uh, with Cheryl said, businesses closed, uh,
Right.
there, and seeing in those businesses, the reefers units and all the, uh, restaurants that use the electricity, it's gone. So,
Yeah, I think, I think the, obviously, the staff's done a great job of, of mitigating expenditures, but it's just the water's under the bridge already, so. Okay, thank you, Mike. Thanks for...
Mike, Mike, can I hold on for that then? Are we in jeopardy of not meeting our minimal purchase then? Since we have less sales. I know we have a set number that we purchase, so we receive a penalty, something like that, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're not in jeopardy. We're tracking, we, for the year, we're, overall, we're down, uh, 67, 68,000 kilowatt hours through, from January through to date, so we're still good there.
Yeah, we're good. All right, thank you.
Uh, Mike, a follow-up question. Of course, you know, we're going into now the, uh, you know, the third quarter, and, uh, there's still some, some businesses that are still gonna be off. Uh, so I think that's something that, that we're gonna have to take into account. Uh, there's still gonna be some numbers that are going to tack onto this, that it may not be to the magnitude that we're showing here. Uh, but I think nevertheless, there's going to probably be, uh, another shortfall in the third quarter, so.
Correct.
Continue, Cheryl.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to water. Water is under-collected by $26,000. However, we have collected $87,000 more than this time last year. Um, we're not, I can't say if that's relative to the new meters, but there's a potential for it. Um, again, water is seasonal. We see most of the usage between the second and third quarter. We might be able to, uh, make, make tell of that in the, at the end of the third quarter. Uh, Mike, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, I, I do not, Cheryl. It's, uh, it's gonna be, um, the most part, I have also been, uh, mindful of our restriction, although it's not a hard-line strip. It's no wiring between 10 and 4, and I think, uh, people are being good about it. So, nothing more to add, but, uh, and then I think the AMI meters, now that we're getting more and more online installed, it's, it's going to show the savings.
Right. Expenditures are also under-budget by 15.2% or 554,000. There, we did have a vacancy for quite some time at the water treatment pla, or, I'm sorry. More. And also, we budgeted the purgatory watershed grant for $286,000. However, only $5,000 has been spent, so there's a, a significant savings there. Um, we are starting to spend that grant money now, so we'll, we should see the administration services, um, start to eat up more of, um, the variance. And finally, uh, there's a decrease in fund balance of 39,000. Revenue is under expenditures by that amount. Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move on to gas. Gas operating revenues, we are 12%, 12.6% over budget for $416,000. This is a seasonal facility as well. Actually, they're all seasonal. However, in the first quarter, we were 588,000 over-collected, so you can see that this number starts to work its way down as the weeks approach the warmer months. Our operating expenses are right on track. We're $39,000 under expended through June. And gas revenues are over-expended by $568,000. Moving on to sewer. Uh, sewer is under-expended by 15,000, let's see, yep, $15,000. Um, again, though, we received $26,000 more than this time last year. Uh, sewer and water go hand in hand. It could potentially be the meters, we don't know. Uh, we gotta give it a little more time. We may see, uh, similar issue at the end of the third quarter, but again, this is the time lines for being utilized, so um, we'll see how that plays out. Sewer expenses are 1,138 over-expended. They would not be over-expended at all, but we had an unexpected repair of $20,000 on Commercial Street, uh, I believe, early in February. But other than that, sewer expenses are right on track. Moving on to landfill, we over-collected by $12,000 in revenue. And we are under-expended by $14,000. That means revenues, uh, or an increase in fund balance of 30, almost $31,000. So, in lottery, we see a little bit of a decrease like we do to COVID. We are under-collected just by a small amount. However, this time last year, we had received $53,000, so we're $13,000 less than this time last year. And then we're also under-expended by nearly $40,000. This time last year, the swimming pool had spent $15,000, and this, at this time, they spent zero. And then the parks and trails, this time last year, they, uh, are, are they're under-expended by $35,000. We've spent $15,000 this year, and at this time last year, we spent $35,000. So, there was very little activity in the second quarter, but the staff is getting up and moving, getting those expenses on right now. Finally, or we're nearly there. Hang on. Uh, for tourism, revenue is short by $47,000 of the actual. Um, by this, this time last year, we had collected $14,000 more than the 115. The second quarter is a little bit slower than the third quarter, and third quarter's when we, uh, collect the majority of the tourism tax. So, it's not as bad as we thought, but it still was a loss of at least $14,000. And Tourism Board did very well cutting their budgets. Also, they cut by $35,000. They did have a little tougher time in cutting some of the costs because a lot of the advertising costs, advertising amounts were contracts that were already locked in, and we couldn't get out of them. Revenue's are over-expenses in tourism by $13,000. Finally, we're, we're capital.
Cheryl?
Yes?
Can I, uh, jump in and ask a question about landfill right now before you go into the capitalist ministers?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to touch base about, you know, later on this meeting, we're gonna be considering increasing, uh, landfill fees. And I'm looking at this revenues over, uh, expenses of $30,748. Is there, is that an unusual thing for there, for landfill to be over expenditures?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning, just need some, uh, filling out the details of, of what is the support behind, uh, having the, the fees for landfill charging?
Erin, uh, this is Phil, and one of the things, uh, you know, we did increase fees overall, a couple of years ago, about a year, maybe a year or two ago, uh, because we do have to plan for the eventual closure. So, that's probably the reason why I think that you're, you're seeing those figures.
Isn't, isn't it? Isn't it true, Cheryl, that... I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Karen.
Isn't it true, this is the first year we've taken the landfill expenses and revenue out of the general fund, and this is really the first time we've ever seen, uh, spreadsheet on the landfill. Is that right, Cheryl?
Yes, that's correct. Um, if you take a peek at last, last year's figures, we actually had, um, revenue of over expenditures by about $63,000. Um, which actually, that's a good thing. We are going to begin charging, um... Uh, okay, I'm gonna have to lean on Mike or Tom for this. There's gonna, there... Go ahead, Tom.
Cheryl, if I may, uh, Mayor Members Council, Palm Beach Public Works. Um, this 30,000 is, obviously, is, is good to see. However, as, uh, was pointed out, with making the landfill into an enterprise fund at the first of the year, the landfill's on its own. So, we're looking at anywhere between half a million, half a million and a million dollars in machinery replacement in the next two years. So, with that figure in front of us, that 30,000 is gonna buy the radio or something. I mean, this is, we need to plan for the future, and the, we really need to stock this up because it is an enterprise fund now, so.
If I can jump in, I got, my phone somehow got cut off right in the middle of the mayor's answer, and and I've heard a little bit about, like, Cheryl, what you said, and what Mr. Bichette, what you said, and, and that sounds good. I just wanted to touch base because we are going to be talking about landfill later in the meeting.
That's exactly.
And then, Tom, also, aren't we gonna start charging for the sewer deposit?
I'm sorry, Cheryl, what was that?
Um, for sewer, we were absorbing the cost for the, whatever they were dumping at the landfill, and now because it's standing on its own, it's gonna have to recognize that expense. It won't be a problem by tomorrow.
As, as well as other departments, uh, even the street and bridge with bringing branches, we'll, we'll have, we'll be paying, street and bridge department will be paying landfill to bring br, branches, and as ridiculous as that sounds, which, I mean, the city hall pays electric bill, they pay gas, they pay water. So, it's same thing. It's pays electric bill, they pay gas, they pay water, so it's same thing, it's just over, over going over to the landfill fund instead of one of the other utilities.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had that backwards, my fault. But regardless, we do have the closure costs that we have to make up and it's about two point three million dollars and I believe we have six hundred thousand dollars saved toward that. So along with the beef, or with the landfill equipment that's gonna be necessary, we have that cost that we have to work out too and it's standing out in the enterprise zone. It's sitting out there all by itself, so that liability is exposing it, um, somewhat and you'll probably see that if you took a look at the audit, or you'll see that actually next year in the audit.
Well Cheryl, the other thing too is here you mentioned that two million dollar closer, uh, that's today's numbers. We don't know what that number will be in twenty-five, thirty years if it comes to be that we have to close it. So it could be quite, you know, astronomically much higher, so that's something we just have to plan for.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll move on to capital. Um, if we take a look at the sales tax, we are over collected by nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Uh, sales tax is actually estimated, I forgot to mention that I estimated that in the general fund also. Um, I did shoot low, however, um, it's probably gonna be more than that with the trend we've been on. And, um, and we've also collected grant money, seven hundred thousand dollars of that is for the DOLA space decree portion. Um, and then, it, as mentioned in my memo, a lot of our CIP projects are starting to make headway and getting going, um, one of them being the Santa Fe Trail, um, paving project under citywide paving and seal coating. And then we just started seeing some expenditures for the sewer infrastructure. So a couple of those projects are getting on, on their way and they're significant projects. Again, we probably won't spend it all in this year, which means it'll be carried forward to next year. But, um, are there any questions regarding capital? All righty, well that wraps it up. Um, thank you very much for your time, please email me or call me if you have any questions.
Uh, like I said earlier, I just wanted to, you know, thank staff for, um, saving all that they can, uh, because we don't know what the third quarter will bring, um, so any revenues a week and revenues that, or any money that we can save, uh, so that, uh, if we have to balance the budget, uh, we don't have to go to the wall again, so, uh, as much as we have in the past, so, uh, good job and, uh, keep up the good work.
I'd like to jump in and add to that, Mayor, I couldn't agree more, hats off to my, uh, staff, all city employees for a great job helping keep these numbers down. It's nice knowing that with the money from the state that'll be coming in through the Los Angeles County and to each, each town, it sure gives us a little flexibility for things and they take a turn for the worse, so it, it's all good news as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, item four, petitions or communications oral or written. Like I said, I, uh, I can't see if anybody is out there, uh, that is listening in that has a comment. I mentioned it to, uh, Ms. Grego, if she would monitor that, is there anybody out there, Ms. Grego, that wants to speak?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, there is Lea Elliott Lopez who would like to speak, please.
All right, uh, Elliot Lopez, uh, go ahead, please.
Hello, Mayor, uh, city council members and city staff and listeners at home. Um, my name is Lee Elliott Lopez and last week I sent each of you an email expressing my concerns over the city's mosquito abatement project. I get it, we all hate mosquitoes, but indiscriminately poisoning the entire city weekly is not the best practice. From my research, the mosquito abatement project was created to combat the West Nile disease. Spraying for mosquitoes, also known as adultericide, is the least effective and most toxic method for controlling the mosquito population. Myself and over two hundred and sixty citizens have signed my petition, would like you to change your method. Please stop this practice, please stop putting the citizens and their pets' health at risk and stop the environmental damage. Please consider that this, that this continued practice may lead to lawsuits as it has for other cities. Discontinuing weekly spraying and switching to, switching to using alternative methods I outlined in my email will also save money. Myself and other community members are offering better solutions. I've already emailed the link to the petition to each of you, um, and please email me for more information. Thank you.
Uh, the only response that I have is, can you contact Mike, cause I know I saw your email and you mentioned that there were some alternatives, uh, I would recommend that you talk with Mike and see what those alternatives are and see if that would be a consideration.
Yes, sir, there are multiple alternatives that Boulder and other communities in Texas have actually implemented, um, one of them being, uh, uh, it's technically considered a pesticide, but it's actually a bacteria that's placed in standing water systems and can be placed on private property. Um, also increasing swallows. When you spray the entire city, it actually kills the frogs, it kills the fish, it kills other things that actually eat the mosquitoes, so by continuing to spraying, you're actually making the problem a lot worse.
Yeah, go ahead, like I said, get ahold of Mike and, and go over those, uh, variables that you might have, so contact, uh, City Manager Mike Valentine, please.
Can you tell me the contact, please?
Uh, Mike Valentine, City Manager.
Okay.
Okay, onto item five.
What's the email?
Uh, just contact, call City Hall eight four six nine eight four three and they can give you all the information necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go on to item.
Okay, let's go on to item five, consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July the twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Item B, approval of the bills for seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Item C, approval of payroll, July the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty through August the seventh, twenty-twenty, for three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dol- thirty, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and forty-three cents. Could I have a motion, please?
No, no need.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
DeRough?
Yes.
Vega?
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bryanston?
Yes.
Eko?
Yes. Onto item six, public hearing, six A, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance adjusting the City of Trinidad landfill, landfill fees. Hearing is now open. Uh, Mr. Beach, would you please, uh, go over that and while you're at it, if you want to, uh, repeat the, uh, landfill fees so that, uh, everyone can hear?
Certainly, Mayor, Members Council, thank you. As stated, this is the ordinance to raise certain items on the, uh, fees for the landfill, namely yard waste, which we haven't been charging for in the last several years, we will raise that to thirty-one dollars per ton for a ten dollar minimum. Um, also, it will raise or begin to charge for upholstered, uh, furniture such as sofas, love steeds, chairs, ottomans and mattresses and box springs at the price of five dollars each. Apparently, we're just taking those as a regular, uh, trash, which is a ten dollar minimum, but, uh, commercial hauls are a little different. Uh, the ordinance will take effect on September first, uh, if council approves tonight and we go from there. Does council want, want me to read the rest of the, uh, big landfill fees, the ordinances or not?
Well, I think they're all pretty much the same, uh, if you want to go ahead and read them all. If you wanna go ahead and read them off, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea, there's only a few.
Um, okay, for general customers, municipal solid waste at twenty-seven per ton with a minimum of ten, as I said, construction waste at thirty-one per ton, as I said, yard waste thirty-one with a minimum of ten, and, uh, five dollars per container of waste material not to exceed thirty-five gallons of volume. License haulers, the prices remain at twenty-two dollars a ton for typical municipal solid waste and construction waste goes to twenty-five. Here it is to twenty-five, it goes to, it saves that thing. Uh, special waste, which is all kinds of different stuff, uh, such as contaminated soil, sand traps, non-trivial asbestos and other similar wastes, which require additional handing by, handling by landfill is thirty-five per ton and special negotiation may be required if it's something in excess of that. Uh, tires, we're doing four dollars for passenger tires up to sixteen and a half inches, six dollars for sixteen and a half up to twenty-two, and then twenty-two and a half up like tractor, uh, heavy equipment tires were twenty dollars each. And as we said earlier, the upholstered furniture is five dollars each per case. That pretty much sums it up.
Okay.
One other thing, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
It's not really part of the, uh, fee ordinance, but it is something we're going to start enforcing, but we've had so much complaints about people bringing things to the landfill when their load is not covered. There's a part of the ordinance from way back says that the, uh, landfill can charge double your, uh, tipping fee if your load is not tarp when you bring it into the landfill. And we are, we are going to start enforcing that, uh, the guys, the gays have been telling people this now for a month or better and it going along with the September first date we were planning on, of course, beginning to enforce that, I would say, emergency.
Okay. Anybody on council have any questions, Ms. Grego? Mr. Schuh?
No, I shouldn't.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir.
Mr. Williamson?
No, Mayor.
Okay, uh, did I miss anybody? Cause I can't see everybody.
Yes.
Miss Ogletree?
Yes, you missed me. I just wanted to note that regardless of whether we had made this into an enterprise fund, we were gonna have to raise the fees even if it had remained on the citywide item. We, it wasn't, um, succeeding as it was, is that correct?
At one point in time, that was true, uh, the reason why we brought about this particular, uh, ordinance, it was because, uh, the waste was not being charged for, uh, takes up a huge amount of room, it's gonna take a lot of man-hours, uh, you know, to get rid of that heaping pile out there and to stay on top of it. And then, of course, uh, just the extra cost and the, the time that it takes to break down, you know, the couches and the chairs and that type of thing that are thrown out there, so that was the reason for this particular ordinance.
I, I'm just noting that regardless of whether it had become an enterprise fund, we needed to raise the fees for the dumping in order to make it a going concern.
Well, at, uh, the back end, yes.
Okay, that's all.
Anyone in, in the audience, uh, to speak for or against the ordinance?
Not from the audience, but from city council, I'd like to, yes, give me, uh, Mr. Mayor, but I'm glad, Tom, y'all are gonna start enforcing the untarp loads, cause see a lot of trail, uh, trash down Santa Fe Trail, Nevada, Arizona, both which do not tar, it's just gotten out of control, so good job on, uh, notifying everybody and gonna start enforcing that.
Okay.
Hey, we've been looking at the, the county road there between North Avenue and State Street that turns into the, the, and there's always stuff on the side there and I've seen several good-hearted citizens that have been out there picking things up on their own and we, when they bring it in, we don't charge them for bringing it in. And I, I know that that's exactly what they're doing and the guys do as well, so we thank whoever they are.
Uh, Mr. Beach, there's, uh, that ten dollars on the waste, is that like on a pickup load?
Yes, there's a ten dollar minimum, truckload, pickup load.
Okay. Okay, that way people know if it's a pickup load, it's gonna be like ten bucks. Okay, there's, uh, no other conver- consideration or conversation about this, hearing is closed. Onto item six A one, secondary ordinance adjusting the City of Trinidad landfill fees, does that have a motion?
Some more for who?
Second?
Second.
Council have any additional discussion? We just had a... If not, call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
DeRough?
Yes.
Vega?
Yes.
O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Eko?
Yes.
Eko?
Yes.
Item six B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing Trinidad Municipal
Code, Chapter fourteen, Planning and Zoning and Reenacting and Adopting By Reference, City of Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, Trinidad Land Use Code. Hearing is now open, uh, Georgie, could you, uh, please fill us in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. The proposal before you to repeal Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, Planning and Zoning, and replace with Chapter fourteen, Land Use Code, is meant to update the code to reflect the goals of the comprehensive plan which Council adopted in February twenty seventeen. Planning Commission and city staff have worked with McCool Development Solutions to prepare the text of the Land Use Code. I'm sure McCool is online tonight to summarize the changes made to reflect the comprehensive plan and to answer any questions you may have, so I'd like to turn it over to Carrie McCool at this time.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. McCool.
Carrie, you're muted.
Yeah, Carrie, you're muted.
Still can't hear you. It shows your mic is active, but it isn't Carrie.
Well, it don't sound like she's gonna be able to tie in, uh, Georgie, do you have anything else you need to add?
Well, um, Mayor, city council has looked at just various sections of the code that we're proposing, um, we've made some changes, like I say, to address the comprehensive plan goals, uh, it's including, um, some items for affordable housing, um, I can go through all of them if you would like.
Well, I'm not sure how necessary it is, cause I know we, uh, you know, when we had our work session, we went through that pretty extensively and I think Ms. McCool covered that as well, so it's probably not necessary. Uh, this particular ordinance has been in the making for last year, year and a half, so it's kinda come to the point, uh, we gotta do something, uh, and there'll be times where we'll have to update it, which is pretty common, uh, but that's something that we will do as, as, as needed. Uh, so, uh, if there's any questions from council, uh, Ms. Grego, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but it seems like Carrie's trying to get on the phone. No go?
No go.
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Schuh?
No, none, thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Goodall?
I just, uh, comment, great job, uh, Georgie, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, entities over there, they all did a great job of driving this to its final conclusion of fruition.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
No co- no comments and, and that's he's right.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
Uh, no comments, Mayor. I agree with Mr. Councilman Goodall.
Okay, I have none and, uh, Georgie, do you have anything else? Now we'll close the hearing.
No, um, thank you, I, all of city staff contributed to this, so I, I thank, uh, Councilman Goodall, um, thanks, but, but after all of them, no.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to add?
I, I do not, Mayor, um, yeah, um, risk of just over crazy. I, I do not, Mayor, um, yeah, um, risk of just over praising everyone, this was, um, a hard, hard job to get done and appreciate Carrie here working with us, Georgie, planning commission, council, it's, it's very long-term funding, as you said, and, uh, looking forward to the completion. There'll be bumps along the way, but, uh, we'll get through.
Yes, we will. Okay, um, if there's nothing else, hearing is now closed. Item, uh, item six B one, second reading of an ordinance repealing Trinidad Municipal Code fourteen, planning and zoning, reenacting and adopting by, and adopting by reference, City of Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, Land Use Code. Have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? If not, call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Beto?
Yes.
There you go?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
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 Yes. On to item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight eight, first reading of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Trinidad, Colorado, establishing development fees, setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six at six P M. on August the eighteenth, twenty twenty. Could I have someone to introduce?
Yes, Mayor, this is Georgie.
Well, I gotta need someone, uh, Georgie first, I need someone to introduce, please.
I will, Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Georgie, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, allows for development fees to offset the city's expenditures and staff time processing development applications. Um, those fees are as follows. The minor subdivision, its fee is seventeen fifty. The preliminary subdivision plat is twenty-five hundred. Final subdivision plat is seventeen fifty. Varian is seven hundred dollars. Lot line elimination or adjustment is three hundred and fifty. A vacate application, seven hundred dollars. Annexation is thirty-five hundred. Rezoning is fourteen hundred. A conditional use permit is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. And a special use permit is seventeen hundred and fifty. Planned unit development is thirty-five hundred dollars. Wireless telecommunication permit is fourteen hundred dollars. And a sidewalk cafe permit is three, three hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, that's all I had with that, Mayor.
Okay, questions from counsel? Ms. Grego?
I think this is a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Um, so if the city initiated, initiates any of these, um, changes, likes, if they're going to annex a piece of property into the city and the, and the city, um, initiates it, does the landlord have to pay that thirty-five hundred dollars? The develop, the developer pays. Okay, well, I was thinking about, the, the only reason I ask that question is because there were, cause a bunch of commercial lots off of Exit eleven, and they were brought into the city, so I just didn't know if it, if those fees apply in every situation.
Um, Councilwoman Grego, there is a provision where the city manager shall have discretion to waive, reduce or refund its ultimate fees. I think in the case where the city, um, initiated the annexation, we definitely consider that option.
Thank you.
Mr. Shu?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. DeBono?
Uh, no, no, sir, not at this time.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Ms. Ogletree?
I had a question just, um, to Ms. Clark, about how do you come up with those amounts? Is it based on the time that it takes staff to, to work on them in each case, or is it just a reasonable approximation, or how do you arrive at those figures?
Yes, I think it's shaped, um, you know, the difficulty of processing the application and the amount of referrals that have to be sent out and, um, and then consult, and consultative fees as well.
Okay. Is it, in your, in your understanding, is it commensurate with us what other cities would charge for that kind of work as development fees?
Um, I have not compared it with other cities to me.
Okay. But, but you base it on, on the, the actual work that it requires staff to do and other costs that are involved? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions after Councilwoman Ogletree's question.
Uh, and Ms. Ogletree, to answer your question, like I said, those are, uh, just a stab at what the cost could be, uh, they might be less in some cases, it could be more in some cases, but though maybe the overall averages might work out. If, uh, something works, uh, you know, down the road or changes come up, that these costs are too low, we can always revisit those, those fees. Uh, so with that, uh, I don't know for the discussion, could you call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Beto?
Yes.
There you go?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Two?
Oh, yes.
Williston?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. Item eight B, eight B is resolution authorizing expenditure of marijuana revenue received by the city of Trinidad second quarter of twenty twenty. Could I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, discussion, Cheryl, uh, if you're still on, do you wanna go over that, please? Cheryl, Cheryl, are you still on?
Council, you should, did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, Council, you should have a resolution in your, um, year drive listing the items that we discussed in the work session. Um, the items include everything attached to the work sheet. Um, and they'd include, or first, the city projects, they amount to eight hundred and four thousand dollars plus ninety-six thousand dollars for the boards and commissions, um, for a total of nine hundred and one thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-eight. And then we also have the forty thousand dollars, um, allocated for the Trinidad Youth Club. Again, all of these are listed on the, uh, on your resolution, and my apologies, I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but we also have a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that technically should have been allocated in the first quarter. So for the city projects, um, which is the sixty-five percent short share, one million forty-two thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-eight have been, uh, allocated in this resolution.
Okay. Uh, and for anyone listening out there, if, uh, you want to see a list of all of the expenditures that are gonna be on this list, list, there's quite a few, uh, how the money's being expended, uh, please contact City Hall, and you can get a copy of it if you would like to see it. Uh, discussion from counsel? Ms. Grego?
I have nothing.
Mr. Shu?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing other than to say great job on getting that all wrapped up. I think we covered a lot with this.
Ms. Ogletree?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Williamson?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, on my end, I just wanted to, you know, say thank you to staff for the recommendations and bringing them forward. Uh, this time, we decided to allocate just about every, every penny to the, of what we received during that second quarter. There's still a small amount available that's going to go into our reserve fund. It's not like we typically have, uh, going into it, but it's, we're putting something in there, so, uh, great job to staff for the recommendations and a great job to council for, uh, their consideration. That being said, call the vote, please.
Council?
Yes.
Go?
Yes.
There you go?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Williston?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. Item eight C, consideration of bid results for project fourteen dash twenty nineteen, Santa Fe Trail Surface Improvements. Could I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Go.
Okay, uh, Mr. Beach, are you on? You wanna give us a, some information on it, please?
Certainly, Mayor, members of council, Tom Beach with Public Works Director once again. Um, as was stated in your packet, this is the resurfacing and reconstruction of Santa Fe Trail from First Street up to Adam Drive, Adam Road. Uh, you'll note wherever the concrete ends, right behind Sonic up the hill around the super elevated curb, up to the top of the hill or at, what they've been doing, the water line and that. Um, it is a complete reconstruction. We will add some water line, the compliant sidewalks and crosswalks in there, as well as flattening out the curb, if you will, um, to prevent people from sliding down against the hillside when it's winter time, and basically making it a much safer travel for the local residents and tourists as well, as I said in the communication. Uh, we have several, this is a good bid, the bids were done by our engineering consultants, GMS out of Colorado Springs. There were five bidders, and the low bidder was, as reported, was Habitat Construction at one million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Counsel have any discussion? Ms. Grego?
No, sir.
Mr. Shu?
No, there it is.
Mr. DeBono? Mr. Goodall?
DeBono, we have an estimated start time if we award this bid?
I have not heard anything at that point yet. It sounded like they were gonna, they were wanting to perhaps split it between fall and spring, but we're gonna fight against that as hard as we can, and that's not gonna work for us.
Great job, great job. Don't let them get away with it, let's get her done.
Yep, exactly. Thank you.
Ms. Ogletree?
No questions and thanks, and more of this in the future.
Mr. Williamson?
Uh, Tom, I have a question, um, have you seen, what does the due diligence look like for, uh, letting, uh, vendor like this, if, if you haven't used them before?
Um, there's been several, that we contacted, we asked that of our consultants, GMS, and they have worked with this company several times with great results each time. So we're kind, we're back on that, we can contact, you know, the coun, the municipalities, they've worked Rocky Ford, they worked, did some work in Holly, they've done some work, um, I'm sorry, the little town north of Holly on seventy, not, uh, alignment, but another small one there. And they have a pretty good reputation carrying them around.
Okay, and I mean, they've obviously, is it considered like how long they've been in business, that, that sort of thing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They've been doing this for, I, I looked that up on the internet, it's twenty-some years.
Okay, but, but we, we have not used them before, but we do have a high degree of, uh, comfort with the due diligence that's been, uh, placed on them?
Yes, I feel that, yep, true.
I really appreciate your, uh, effort in this, Tom, thank you.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Um, when you have a contract like this to, I'm certain there was a bond that the city required, so that, that financially, it, uh, indemnifies the contractor, the bonding company will, will step in when, uh, if and when the contractor defaults on the project.
Very true.
Right?
That is correct, Ms. Grego, there, there is performance and payment bonds.
Right. Just easier not, don't get those involved.
Yeah, that's not fun, we've done that.
Uh, Mr. Beach, uh, did this come in, uh, you know, under budget, over budget?
Um, right at, I will say, the, uh, engineering company, our consultant came in at one million five seventy, so we're at one million, three fifteen.
Okay.
Um, we may go, you've probably seen the alternates on the, uh, bid sheet, we're going to discuss with, um, we're not going to do alternate one, that's a given, that's just not gonna happen. But we may consider alternate two, which is replacement of a different type of handrail, different material for handrail, so we, we will consider that. At this point, yes, we're, we're fairly certain it's, I didn't write a budget for it.
Well, you know, it's, it's good to see that, you know, this, uh, repaving will, and now that we fixed that, uh, water line that was leaking real bad there, hopefully we can eliminate the sinking of that road that has been occurring every year, and that's probably the area that we get the most complaints on in town coming down that street. Uh, so hopefully, keep our fingers crossed that that has gotten fixed, and of course, there's a, a little spot left from that First Street down to Main Street, which we'll, uh, attempt to take care of down the road, so, uh, glad to see this is finally getting done. Call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Beto?
Yes.
There you go?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Williston?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel reports, Ms. Grego?
I have nothing to report, sir. I would just like to start honing in on our marijuana money, uh, expenditures, like with the boards and commissions, and some on the A D O. Mike and I had a meeting today and we're talking about maybe there's a better way to go on the A D O, uh, instead of demolishing, maybe sell as is, so we don't have to put that men, money out for demolition. I don't know, but it's something to think about.
You know, I know according to talking, talking to, talking to, uh, uh, you know, our building inspector, he was, uh, he was saying that, uh, you know, even though we've put out some money, uh, but a lot of times when they've no, they've been noticed, uh, the homeowner handles it themselves, so we've been very fortunate in that regard, so I think we've done a pretty good job. But, yeah, we can look at it to see if there's anything different that we can be doing, sure. Let's, let's hear it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I just wanna thank counsel and staff as well, you know, we've had a lot of kudos for staff tonight, but there's a project that's very close to my heart, the animal shelter, and I appreciate, appreciate council's support for that project and staff's support for that, uh, project, and I wanna thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
No, I have no, nothing to report this time.
Okay, uh, I think I've already asked everybody, did I?
No.
No, Mr. DeBono?
No.
Mr. DeBono, go ahead.
I have a couple things to share with the council of, I, I attended the, uh, the monthly meeting of the Los Angeles County Veterans Council yesterday, and they wanted to thank the city for the generous fifteen thousand dollars that was given them, and they were very appreciative, and they wanted to let everyone know that all of their services, their events, and, uh, their activities are not just for veterans and their families, they're for everyone in the city and the county. And, um, I have a, another thing to mention, I, I walked last Friday along the River Walk with a, a ten-year-old male, and with his help, we repainted the benches, a lot of that were tagged with the armpit graffiti, the barrels and some of the sewer lids from one end to the other end.
Anything else?
the barrels and some of the sewer lids from one end to the other end.
Okay, anything else? Mr. De Bono, anything else?
Uh, no, this is not maybe a council report, but maybe this might be a less question. I had someone ask me about, can a city pass a municipal mandated order to require wearing a mask? Because I guess in Summit County, they superseded the health department in that capacity and I didn't know how to answer that.
Mike, you want?
It stands to me.
Mr. Downs, Mr. Downs, do you want to answer that?
Well, sure, Mayor, you know, I'll try. I, I think that if a municipality were to try to require mask-wearing, it might result in like a general insurrection. I mean, I, I don't know how enforceable it would be. Um, and, and I, I just think there would be a very, very tough thing to do if a municipality were to try to do that. So I, I think it would be legal if it were to be based on the, the health department considerations and that was really the recommendation of, of the health department. Uh, but outside of that, it, we might be accused of overreaching, but I, I just think it's such a politically charged issue. To answer your question, could we do it? I believe we could. Uh, but should we do it, without my own personal opinions weighing in, I just, I think it would be a very difficult thing to try to enforce. And as you know, Councilman De Bono, I mean, like they, they have tried to enforce mask-wearing at Walmart, they can't do it. They tried to enforce mask-wearing at Safeway, they can't do it. And I know that they get exasperated in trying to, to do that and it just isn't done. I, I'm sorry, I know I'm blaspheming hard, but, but that is, that is really the best answer I can provide. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, and the person that, I guess, has relations in Summit County and they stated that they actually passed that and there was not even a warning because a lot of tourists were coming in from out of state in Breckenridge area, Summit County. And they actually assessed a twenty-five-dollar fine for anyone not wearing a mask.
Well, I, you know, I have thoughts on that. I don't dare walk that plank though. I mean, I, I understand and I, you know, a, a large part of me thinks that's a good thing, but I just don't know that that, that that would go over here. As the saying goes, that that would play in peoria. I mean, I, I just don't know that that would go over, but, but it's a good question, right? I appreciate the thoughtful question. Thank you, Ms.
I am, you know, I am seeing, you know, more people wearing masks, which is a good thing, so. Uh, Mr. Goodall?
Um, I have nothing to report tonight.
Ms. Ogletree?
I just wanted to share that over the last month or so, I keep continually meeting new people who are moving to Trinidad who are enthusiastic about our city and want to be involved in building its future. And it's just been very encouraging to me in the middle of all of what's going on with COVID. Um, and the other thing I want to say, second what Councilwoman Grego said, I'm, I'm really excited that the Nose Arc Shelter is gonna be finished because I, I think it will continue to be a jewel in our crown. I think we have an extraordinary service that we provide and, and people in the city are very proud of it and I'm looking forward to it being completed.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank council for all the work they put in with the marijuana expenditures, just like Councilwoman Grego said. I think it's important work we're doing. Also take the time to thank Mike and the entire city staff. It's not, you know, most games are not won by massive plays, it's, it's all the little actions that every team member takes. And I think that's the way budgets are controlled too, so it was really great to see that report and the success we're having. So thank you very much, Mike and your team. Also, thank you. Also, I wasn't able to attend my first meeting of the council of government, so got a very warm welcome there and I'm getting up to speed on that. Excited about, um, learning more about that and taking part. There was, um, nothing to replace, I mean, reports in so much as, uh, Mike, I'm sorry, the, the position that I spoke to you about, they, they were mentioning and a person to be appointed to the group to make decisions with C-DOT. That's, that's probably upcoming, maybe you give some consideration to that.
Right, that's their transportation, they're reaching their BPR representative for the region. Each community has, has several, so if their thirty-year plan, planning, they try and get the thirty years out that as things happen in different parts of the region, we kind of are able to categorize that, so it's a very important position, yes.
I believe I said the next meeting that is being planned for September, so we have some time before we made the recommendation for that.
Uh, Mr. Williamson, just one thing I want to mention to you. I participated in a C-DOT planning last fall, last fall and into the early, and part of the winter. And it was their five-year plan that, as a matter of fact, you could probably get that from Mike and you can take a look at that if you're interested in looking at it, what their five-year plan is. And of course, because COVID, I think is gonna set things back a bit, but they're, they still are going to work on a long-term plan. Because they have like a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, and of course, I guess they're talking thirty-year plan, so. Uh, we'll see what tool on council may want to, you know, be appointed to that position, so. Uh, the only thing that I really have is, I wanted to mention something and to everyone listening. The, you know, listen to the health department every day or on Mondays and Wednesdays, I think some of staff does, I know Mike does. But, you know, currently we have seventeen cases in town. I think there's like eighty people that are being quarantined right now. And just to show those numbers, even though they're lower than some other areas. Uh, but we need to try to encourage everybody to do their part. You know, their social distancing, you know, the masking that we're talking about, like I said, I've seen more people wearing masks lately, which is good to see. But we need to try to do everything that we can to keep this thing from spreading. Because if we're going to bounce back as soon as we possibly can, that is the only way that we are going to move past this and come out on the other end in good shape. You know, financially, we are in decent shape right now. Uh, we don't know what the third quarter and fourth quarter will bring, so we need to plan accordingly. But I just ask, not, I'm speaking to the choir here, but as far as council, I think we all understand that. But for the radio and the, or the newspapers and anyone else that's listening out there, please encourage everybody to do their part so that we could stem this, this COVID nineteen that we have. Uh, with that being said, want to move on to Mr. Valentine?
Mayor, may I, may I have a question just quickly, if you don't mind? Is a, a point of clarification. Um, I was wondering, when they say we have seventeen cases, that's, that's from the first test positive to current, correct?
That is correct.
And then of those seventeen, do we know how many are recovered and testing negative at this point? Or is that a number that is not reported?
Uh, well, I think it's an important number and I don't know, Mike, have you heard anything on that when we listened in? I don't recall anything, but I know there's several of them that have recuperated, but I don't know what that number is. Mike, do you have that number?
Well, Mayor, um, Council, Councilman Williamson, when we were, we were kind of steady at like nine at that time. We had nine cases and all, all nine have recovered. Um, here with this last batch or, you know, four or five in the case, I think we have five that are still quarantined and recovering. I don't think they tested them yet.
I, I agree, I, I, I thought it's an important number. I just, I was asking if it was reported, so thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Valentine, go ahead and give your report, whatever you have.
Actually, Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Downs?
Well, it usually doesn't come to me that fast. Well done, Mr. Valentine. So there are just two things. The first one is, I want to say to go back to the earlier discussion of the land use code and the development review fees. I want to say that all of the fees that we charge in the study, the US tests, they're all rationally related to the, um, to the approximate labor that we're going to have to invest. And that is why when you look at the table of fees, where you have thirty-five-hundred dollars for a planned unit development, thirty-five-hundred dollars for an annexation, twenty-five-hundred dollars for a preliminary subdivision plan, those are all items or activities that we do, they're the most labor-intensive activities as a municipality. And I, I wanted to say too, that we don't want to do comparables with other municipalities because this is an approximation of the, the effort that we're going to be putting into those things. And we have a legal challenge on the, on the rational basis for fees being assessed. We want to be able to tie it to the approximate actual effort that goes into that for this municipality, for those activities. I'm sorry to say anything while Ms. Clark was having a conversation with the council, but she was doing a very good job. I, I just wanted to add that in, um, when I had an opportunity to speak. And with that being said, my last thing is, can you believe that the two highest people in city management, City Hall, both have a birthday on the same day? Mike and Audra both have birthdays today. Mike and Audra, let me repeat that, Mike and Audra both have birthdays. And it, it, I mean, why, yeah, how do they, you know, we have a council meeting and it's just the planets are aligning for this, you know, whole thing, but anyway, I just wanted, you know, to wish Mike and Audra a happy birthday. As if I hadn't done that yet today, but I just want the council to know that, yeah.
Well, I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna muti, Audra, what happened to you?
I know, I know.
Anyway, happy. Anyway, happy birthday, Mike, happy birthday, Audra, have a good rest of the evening. Okay. With that, let's go ahead. Happy birthday to you. I think we're all muted. Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn, mo- mo- motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, please. Motion to adjourn.
Happy birthday.
Hello? I guess we're adjourned. Good night.